Twenty twenty four to order. In attendance, board members Gary Leonard, David Hamm, and calling in, and we appreciate you all calling in, is Ms. Dale Turner, our vice chair, and Ms. Jane Allen Wilson. Do I have, and thank you ladies for being here, we appreciate you. Oh, that might help too, I forgot. Do I have a motion to go into, well, let me change that. I'll make the motion to go in or to approve the agenda, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So moved, or second?
Second, got a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All in favor with an aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and I'll start polling y'all too, so I'll catch up. All right, we're moved to action items. The special PLS update, recommended policy revisions, and
And then the last piece that is kind of an implication for us, we have many EC students in our district. It requires that we have to make sure that our Title IX coordination is also happening in tandem with the IEP team to make sure that we're following both the Title IX requirements and also the IDA requirements. As you know, there has also been ongoing litigation surrounding these rules. A district court judge in Kansas issued a ruling granting a preliminary injunction prohibiting the enforcement by the US Department of Education in just in four states, not including North Carolina. Also, a specific school in Oklahoma and three schools attended, any schools that are attended by members of Young America's Foundation or the Female Athletes United, as well as the schools attended by children of members of North Florida Liberty. Relevant to school systems in North Carolina, this means that schools that are not on this list must follow the new Title IX requirements. It also states in the injunction, it does not prevent voluntary adoption of local policies to comply with the new Title IX rules. It merely prevents the Department of Education from enforcing those rules against certain schools. At least one Chatham County school has been identified on this list, and we do know that the court has given an extension to that, so we could anticipate that there could be other schools that would be added. I believe they had until July twenty sixth to turn in.
I think that's what it said, if I remember the date right, yeah.
We could have two different sets of schools that are following different structures.
Can I just clarify, Dr. Moran, there are thirteen schools on the new list in Chatham County, so I'll just read them. It's Bennett, Bonley, Chatham Central, Chatham Early College, Chatham Grove, George M. Horton, Margaret B. Pollard, North Chatham Elementary, Northwood High, Perry Harrison Elementary, C-Fourth High, which was the one that was on the original list. Silk, Siler City Elementary, Silk Hope Middle, those are the thirteen. And we have twenty, twenty schools, is that right?
Thirteen.
Yeah, so we have thirteen on the list and six or seven that are not.
Tell me. In the last piece of, if you could pull up the in the last piece of the summary, we have a paragraph there that we wanted to share, has been added, we added it a little bit later today. Has been added to the specific policy related to the process and the procedures. Just a paragraph there that just outlines, given the ongoing litigation, just making sure that we know that we have to abide by these guidelines. You can see the wording that was there. I don't want to read it to everyone, but just wanted to call attention to that. So that's been added, everything else is exactly as written from the school board. As far as any financial impact, it's a little too early to say, but we do anticipate there could be some additional costs. We weren't kind of what all these things mean, we might have to have additional counsel or some training for staff as things unfold.
And again, as Dr. Moran said, we're we risk losing federal funds if this is not approved by August the first.
Yeah, I think that's probably unlikely. I think that the law says we should adopt it by August first. If we are found to be in violation of Title IX and we don't remedy it, that's when the Department of Education could say that
I got you, okay, okay, okay. So I guess my question is, what, these schools, some on, some not on, what's going to be the difference for the administrators, because that's going to be the question, I guess, Adam?
So I think that, I think
Is that part of the last paragraph? I know.
So, all right, the Department of Education, which oversees and enforces Title IX, they've put out new regulations, and that happens, that happens when administrations change, when leadership changes, it takes a while. And so that's, that happened, and the School Boards Association, as it always does, recommends policy changes, not non-controversial. I mean, they're, you know, straight down the middle, they don't take any real positions, they just say, "School boards, here's what we think you need to do in order to comply with the law." So the, the policies are, in a sense, routine. Regulations changes, School Board Association does its job and says, "Here are the, here are the policy changes." The, the thing that complicates it is, is this litigation, which, which does kind of cut our district in half, in a sense, or close to half, where we have thirteen schools that are on this list and six or seven that are not. And I do want to say that there's no real process or certification for a school to go on the list. It's really just the lawyers for the plaintiffs saying that the school should be on the list, so that there's no checking. And, and that's just an observation. It's not hard to put a school on a list, is the point. And so for schools that are not on the list, for those six or seven, they are covered by the new regulations, period, there's no doubt there. For the schools that are on the list, and this is where it, it's complicated, and it gets sort of very lawyerly. It's not that they can't use the new regulations, it's that the Department of Education can't enforce the new regulations. So if someone, if there were to be a complaint, and we were to follow the, the new regulations at C-Fourth, for example, and someone were to take issue with that or complain that, that we're not following our own processes, or there's an issue with it, the Department of Education couldn't penalize us because this injunction is in place preventing them from enforcing these new regulations. And that's why there's this language that there's nothing that prevents us from adopting them. Now, if the litigation eventually gets to a point where a court says these regulations are illegal or are unconstitutional, that's different, then we're not going to, we can't enforce those regulations. The point about the language is just to indicate that things are changing on a, on a daily basis with the course of this litigation. And so what we are saying, essentially, we are saying, we are going to follow the law appropriately, given the situation. And, and I think my practical guidance, and I know your staff knows this, is that if we get a Title IX complaint in, in the near future, before this is all resolved, we need to work together on that. And I mean, we always do, but it's a particularly important time to get counsel, just given this uncertain landscape. So we will help analyze and apply the right set of regulations. In a perfect world, things will be resolved sooner rather than later, and we'll have one set. But that's kind of what we're trying to accomplish with this system.
Thank you. Question?
One thing I want.
I'm, I'm a little confused about, okay, so why, what list is C-Fourth on?
So
I'm, I'm thinking that if, if these Title, Title IX laws apply to all of our schools until some other, until a judge decides that the, the loss of litigation involving the injunction had some merit, then why, why wouldn't all of our schools be covered?
So the, the list, remember, the injunction applies to certain number of schools in, in, schools in four states, not including North Carolina, a specific school in Oklahoma, and then schools attended by members of these three groups, Young America.
I understand that, and I'm, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that the law won't go along with accommodating special interest groups like that. But it is what it is right now, but I'm just wondering why are we even worried about putting one of our schools on the list? This, these changes from the Department of Education should cover everybody until something else changes legally.
That, that's happened. A judge has said that school districts are enjoined or stopped. Now, let me, let me walk that back. That Department of Education is enjoined from enforcing the rules at these schools, including thirteen of ours. So that, that injunction has legal effect. But again, the impact is not that we can't adopt the rules, it's that the Department of Education can't enforce them. We are, we are adopting one set of, we are adopting a policy or policies that comply with the new regulations, and we are just acknowledging that in light of litigation, we are going to do a careful case-by-case analysis to make sure that, that the correct regulations are being followed.
Mr. Hamm, oh, Dr. Jackson, you had something, go ahead, Mr. Hamm.
Something to maybe help clarify to the public and everybody, and maybe clarify me too, to make sure I know what I'm saying. When all this started, there, there, there is a timeline, and Department of Education, whoever got this out, it finally got to the School Board Association. They perused it and worked tirelessly, trying to figure out what it's all about and how to look at our policies and, and change it. And then y'all looked at it and dealt with it. And it was just very recently that, I guess, Dr. Moran, Dr. Jackson, they actually got these things in hand, and very recently, to the point that in our meeting last week, we had to talk about, we need to have a special call meeting quickly because this has got to be in place before August first. And so that's why, just to clarify to the public, it, I think, from a Chatham County standpoint, I think we have done our due diligence in processing. The bigger picture, it, it took Washington, it took the School Boards Association, not pointing blame, I'm just saying, it just, it just, the wheels had to turn, and it ended up that the perception might be, and I can't say whether a hundred and fourteen other school systems are doing this in the next couple of days or not, that's their business. But we wanted to make sure that we were compliant with the new regulations and the new policies, and that's why this meeting was called, not hastily, it was just, we had to do it before August first. So I just kind of wanted to clarify that. Another point of clarification, which the, the Title IX covers many things. But the one thing that, that has come up in the, in the news and made such headlines is the, the fact of athletes. And in North Carolina, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm making the wrong statement, in North Carolina, I'll say our legislature or State Department, I'm not sure which one, but somebody above us has said and made it law, I guess, that in order to participate in a sport, you have to participate in the sport that is designated on your birth certificate of what sex you are. So that, that in itself clarifies any of that issues about Title IX, because in North Carolina, it, it, it's not what you say you are, it's what your birth certificate says you are. Am I correct in saying that?
Yeah, generally, that's right. There is a recent state law that deals with, I think it's called the Fairness in Women's Athletics Act, and that does address athletics and, and gender. And what I would say is that the new Title IX regulations do not address that topic directly. I have heard that there may be a, an additional regulation that does, and if that happens, then we'll deal with it. As, as a general rule, federal law would preempt state law if there is a direct conflict. At the moment, there is not, and so I would absolutely advise that you follow North Carolina law on that topic. And again, if, if we get to a point where there's a conflict, we can address it then. But that's, that's where I am on that.
I'm glad you said that, because your words carry a whole lot more weight than mine.
Dr. Jackson, you had a comment?
So, Mr. Mitchell, I want to be clear, so that we give staff the appropriate direction. What we really have is either, if there's a Title IX violation or active complaint, thank you. We are either holding, we're either, we will either exercise our current procedure or this new procedure based on the, the ruling of the new, there, there's no new process in there. It's either one or the other, it's what we're currently doing.
Right.
Or it's the new one with the more fast-track adjudication and those kinds of things, and that, it would be one or the other. There's no new
Yes, it is, it is going to be one or the other.
One or the other, okay.
And, and we'll help with it, and I, I do think it's important that while there are changes, we're still going to investigate
Sure.
the concern and get to the bottom of it and treat everybody fairly. It, it's not, you know, it's not like we used to have a process, and now we don't have a process.
That's what I want to get to.
Right, they're, they're fine, they're, they're fine tuning certain definitions and certain processes, so I don't, there's not a radical difference between whether we're using the old or the new. There are differences, but I think that, at the end of the day, you'd probably get to the same place, whichever one you're following. And, and we will be very careful and systematic about which one.
And, and you said something that pulled me back. Since no one has had to identify who these children are, is it that the entire school is covered? I thought it was the children of the members, and if they've not had to self-identify, how do we know?
It's, it's the, again, the injunction applies to the Department of Education and their ability to enforce at schools where there are children of members. And there's no, again, there's a list that was submitted to the court. I don't think there's any process to challenge it, I wouldn't suggest we go there in the slightest bit.
Sure.
And so the list is the list.
You've clarified it for me, thank you, sir.
Okay, I also failed to mention is that to meet the training requirements, we will be having training tomorrow, actually, for all of our district leaders as well as all of our school leaders, but it will be having that before the August birthday.
Okay.
David's coming to that, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so, so my colleague David Nolan is really our point person on this, and he's been working with Dr. Moran and Dr. Jackson. He's actually coming to the training tomorrow, so you will get, he's the one who's following the litigation and helping draft our guidance. So you will have the most up-to-date guidance and expertise that, that we have.
Question on the, on, on the motion. Do we know, I know policy-wise, we normally put it out there, you know, as far as first and second reading. Do we need, in the motion, do we need to waive first reading on this?
Yes.
Okay. I move Chatham County Board of Education waive first reading and approve the Title IX policy updates as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Got a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Ms. Wilson or Ms. Turner, we ready to vote?
No. Yes.
Okay, all right. All in favor, and I'm going to just say, Gary with an aye?
Aye.
Mr. Hamm with an aye, Ms. Turner?
Aye.
And Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you, all right. Thank you, Dr. Moran, and Adam, please. Next, Board of Education, got a personnel meeting, what, Wednesday, August, that's next Wednesday, August 7th at noon. I make the motion that we adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor with an aye? Aye.
Aye.
And disapprove, like sign, thank you very much, thank you ladies, we appreciate it. Sun's still not out yet, I thought maybe it would be, time we get through.